Welcome to the May 27th, 2021, Parma City School District Court of Education meeting. Everybody please stand and pledge allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in common.
Roll call, Mr. Nusio.
This is Bratz.
Present.
This is purpose.
Present.
Mr. Price.
Present.
Mr. Swartze.
Present.
Mr. Vaughn.
Present.
Thank you, Mr. Nusio. The board remains committed to the health, safety, and welfare of its students and their parents, our staff, and our community. But even in these times, the board needs to take action to keep the district operational now and fully functional in the future. For these reasons, the board will conduct an in-person meeting tonight with limited seating due to the required three-foot social distancing. We will livestream this meeting to the public in accordance with applicable law. Dr. Smilak, can you please confirm that the meeting is currently being livestreamed?
I can.
Can you please monitor the livestreaming throughout the meeting, and if there is a problem, please speak up immediately so that the technical difficulty can be addressed?
I will.
Thank you. And with that, we go to you, Dr. Smilak, for information for the board.
Thank you. Just like to spend a couple minutes talking about commencement. Really felt that commencement was just a wonderful Parma day, great weather and setting and festivities to celebrate our seniors. Really enjoyed having it at Byers Field. I understand that sometimes when you have an outdoor ceremony, weather can be a variable that you obviously don't control, but we had really good weather. We have backup plans in case we didn't. And I just felt really keeping it in town and having, you know, our own home field be centerpiece of the city and the centerpiece of our district really for all of Saturday was just a beautiful way to celebrate our graduates. There's people I'd like to thank. Al McElhanlon and his crew really spent a lot of time getting Byers Field prepared. Bill Green did a lot of work to make sure the stage was ready and the chairs were rented. Obviously, we don't have those things in our facilities typically. So from a grounds perspective, we were really phenomenal. Audrey and Amy and Gary in the Public Relations Department worked extremely hard to make sure we had the right graphics ready. And then that day, the livestream on the scoreboard was just really a great feature. So for Amy and Gary, I really appreciate your hustle and being there. And then, you know, obviously, our high school administrators have always thought that May in a high school is the busiest month of any level of any month of any school year. The amount of work that gets done in terms of determining who graduates and making sure that logistics are in order, certainly prom is always consideration as well. So very thankful to them. And I just also want to mention our six senior advisors. Vic Fielder and Sarah Boone from Normandy, Marissa Carls, Kathy Corfond from Valley Forge, Tom Handtuck and Larissa Young from Parma Senior. You know, I understand they get supplementals for, you know, working outside their teaching jobs, but the hours they spend, I'm sure it's from mid-April on, just to make sure all of the logistics are accounted for. I'm sure it's, you know, a five or $6 an hour job by the time they actually figure out what they're made. Very grateful for all of those adults. But then really, I'd like to give a little bit of facts and figures about our seniors as well. We had 733 graduates in the class of 2021, Normandy with 238, Valley Forge with 257, Parma Senior with 238. So congratulations to those seniors. In terms of honors, Normandy had four summa cum laude students, that's a grade point average of 4.5 or above, 29 magna cum laude, which is 4.0 to 4.49, 31 superior honors, and 24 students seniors earned the National Honor Society. Parma Senior had six summa cum laude, 14 magna cum laude, 25 honors sopholas, and 32 National Honor Society members. And Valley Forge had 10 summa cum laude, 37 magna cum laude, and then 51 graduated with honors. So congratulations to all of our students, but a special congratulations to all those who earned such distinctive honors, really shows commitment to scholarship throughout their four years. And we were very happy to celebrate with them and their families on Saturday.
Thank you. Any other communications?
Well, we also have a secondary science presentation. Are we ready for that?
Or information. Yeah.
Yeah.
I thought maybe somebody else wanted to say something about commencement.
It was wonderful.
I should have said education.
It was good. I absolutely adore having a Byers Field. That was fantastic.
Yeah.
I sent pictures to my kids who all graduated either Lakewood or Woolstein Center, and they were like, I could have done that. That would have been awesome. And, you know, they're a little envious. And I think, rightfully so. I think it's good. I hopefully they can do that again for future graduations.
Yeah, agreed. Both of my kids graduated from Normandy's gym back in the day. And, you know, talk about not a comparison. You know, so when I was telling them, you know, what a nice day we had, it's like the same thing. They thought that was pretty cool. So did I.
I agree. It was very, it was kind of the combination of everything. And seeing the diversity of our students, seeing the diversity of what they're doing after, you know, leaving our colleagues between the service and the trade and college and the different career paths. I mean, it really was the epitome of what Parma Strong is. And so to see it all there, right here in our own hometown, so to speak, I am definitely in favor of keeping it there.
I loved it. I thought it was spectacular. Honest to goodness, it was just so fun. And for me, being right here at home was terrific, of course, instead of having to go someplace you're unfamiliar with, find Parma being and all of these other issues. But the thing that I enjoyed the most, sitting on the stage, looking at the families in the stands and the students in their chairs on the track, they were enjoying themselves.
Yeah.
They were having a wonderful time, celebrating their children, each other. It was wonderful. They had signs. They just were having so much fun. And I think that's what it's about. This is a celebration and one of the biggest milestones in a family's life, a child's life. And to see them enjoying it so much and not feeling stuffy about it, I guess, you know, and having such a good time. I thought that was wonderful. It was just a perfect blend of enough dignity to appropriately honor the situation, but not so much that they couldn't enjoy themselves. And it just looked like everybody was having such a good time. I loved it. I thought it was wonderful.
Absolutely. Mr. Price.
Yeah, I apologize.
No, no, you don't need to apologize.
Actor's orders.
We did miss you.
I'm glad. I'm glad it was at Byers. It's a great place to have it. And I think it's a, it is a centerpiece of our town, and it's nice to utilize sometimes. You do roll the dice in Northeast Ohio, you know, whenever you have an outdoor event, but it worked out.
Worked well. All right. Those things said, we will turn over to Ms. Emmett to talk to us tonight about secondary science materials.
I'll stop him.
All right. Thank you so much for getting me, Dr. Smilak and the board. I'm here again. I've got a curriculum instruction to talk to you a little bit about some of the great science materials that we'd like to recommend to you for general and honors chemistry, biology one, and environmental science courses. So as always, we are continuing to try to increase student achievement by providing teachers, students, staff with quality materials that we know will support their teaching and learning. As well, we always provide the opportunity for the community to be able to see any of the materials that we have recommended. Today they have been found through in our social media outlets as well as our website. And of course, we always continue to pay attention to our budget and maintain quality expectations. So a little bit of why and where we are with our adoptions and why this is such a need for secondary science. Looking across the board, biology one, we were last adopted in 2015. Chemistry, general chemistry had not been adopted since 1992. Much has changed in our environment. So it was definitely a need, as well as our honors chemistry 2007 and environmental science 2007. Along the way, our science standards have changed in some courses drastically, and up-to-date events have changed. And so making sure that our students have access to real-life connections and opportunities to learn in a scientific manner that is appropriate for the 21st century was really at the forefront of what we were trying to accomplish within our science community. And lastly, obviously, with our need for the Parma Virtual Learning Academy, we needed to make sure that science still had that inquiry and engagement that we often see inside classrooms with labs, that we could take that to a digital printer and still get quite a bit of experience of seeing that interactive nature and inquiry. We follow the same process. And with that, we create teams, we pay attention to what is out there in terms of board adopted or other districts and what they do, as well as the already approved vendor list. We bring in multiple samples for our community to look at. In this case, we had quite a variety from Savis, MaBraveville, H&amp;H, and then Cendy H. National Geographic for all the courses to take a look at what they had offered. We continued our tech review and then had presentations for staff to be able to attend and give their feedback along with community feedback as well. We had a great team. They were made off of not only people who are teaching those courses, but also our science department partners were involved. We had, this time, I had the opportunity of actually having a lead facilitator who was one of our teachers. Abbie was also working with multiple groups with this night courses trying to go on. She was able to help lead those courses as well as myself to make sure that everyone had a voice and was getting the opportunity that they needed. So here we come to what recommendations we have for you today. So for biology one, we're looking to adopt a biology textbook from Savis Learning Company, which we already have several textbooks through them. This one was created in 2019, so it aligns with new standards. In environmental science, we have Your World Returns, also from Savis Learning Company. This is the most recent copy rate of 2021, so it's very current and has great aspects that I think our kids will really enjoy and engage with. And then chemistry, we have a separate book for general chemistry and then an honors book. And this was an ask that our committee really wanted to facilitate because they felt like they needed our honors students to not only have that content, but have that little extra push to understand and go deeper. And this textbook that they utilized for honors that they chose provides them the opportunity of that higher-level text, content, and inquiry that they feel like they really wanted to set the bar for our honors courses in science. And then lastly, what we're bringing is actually for all science department is interactive digital labs and simulations. It's a program platform that will actually be for not just these courses, but we're going to open it up because they offer math and science, simulation and digital labs. And so we felt like we wanted to provide this not to just these courses, but also all of our science secondary courses. So a little bit of information about the biology. You're going to find that all of our selections kind of fall within the same realm of things that they have in common. The content within science and what you find often with science content is sometimes it's hard for students to understand the content and how it's written. So what the science committee was looking for was not only, obviously, quality content that aligned with students, but also provided either teachers or students the opportunity to access that content no matter where they are in their level of learning. And this provided that. It provided the push for critical reading opportunities, but then it provided the support that our students possibly set on the special needs spectrum as well as just lower-level lifestyle range that they can have access to the content. The other big ask was that authentic connection. One thing that all three have in common is they embed case studies. So making it real for our kids and making them understand that science revolves a lot around problem solving. And so in this case, with biology, we're looking at some problem-based learning activities within each unit. We're looking at the authentic case studies that are going to connect what they're doing with the labs with what they're learning and with the knowledge and content. And then digital tools was a must. And these, this one provided also simulation, actions, e-books, and then other things related to our already district approved digital tools. From the same company, environmental offers many of the same things, but it also brought that notch of real-world connections. Being either environmental science, you're going to want a textbook and you're going to want a curriculum resource that provides you that opportunity to connect to environmental problems and to understand how students can inquire about it, dig deeper for data, as well as then solve those real-world problems. And that's what this whole textbook does with quick labs, with case studies, and then interactive fields that allow them to actually write and discuss more than just simple fill-in answers. National Geographic is the other company that our science department decided was best for, like I said, the both regular chemistry as well as honors chemistry. They too have great tools that provide students with access to content as well as access to up-to-date materials. With it being digital, there are a lot of ways that they're going to be able to access a lot of what we already see in, and National Geographic is well-known for, which is those real-life images, which is the real-life information that is constantly updated because it is a digital platform along with a print textbook. In this case, investigations was also a high ask. In chemistry, they still wanted the use of hands-on labs, and we needed the ability to not only have hands-on labs within person, but also ways we could adapt it virtually. The last thing that connects to it all and that all of our science secondary teachers and students will have access to is that digital simulation lab. And this was actually brought to us by our teachers. It's an ask actually quite often that they want this as a supplemental anyway. And we'll get a few here and there. And when it came to our textbook adoption, they do provide some simulations, but this provides over 400 different simulations in a variety of different science topics, and there are math topics. And so we can either get a little bit of something or you can provide that access for all. We feel like our science students and staff deserve access for all. So in this case, they're provided with the ability to do digital online labs, to engage in STEM cases where they're problem-solving and given information, and then they have to manipulate things, like physically put on safety goggles and physically, you know, get their dropper and put things the way they need to. It's come a long way. And so with regard to the fact that we are going to still be instructing students virtually, we wanted that experience to be as authentic as we can make it and make it enough that they're learning, engaging, and engaging. We provided the opportunity for feedback. As our results show, our staff was extremely excited about all of our chosen curriculum resources. The one thing that kept repeating along this was that they were looking for something that they could get used and find as a resource that they knew their students would be engaged with. And that came across all of our certain results. We did have it out to the community, and as of today, we did not receive any responses. As always, we support professional developments that are sustainable and ongoing. So they will have access right away to any professional development that is already recorded or provided by the companies. And then instead of waiting till we're very, very beginning, we usually offer multiple opportunities for them to attend either a virtual session prior to coming to school, or when we get back in August, we will either provide another virtual opportunity for teachers, or if we tend to come back in person, depending on the company, we can offer them an in-person training. But regardless of where the initial training starts, the ongoing support from our curriculum instruction department is going to be there because we know it should not just be old once and done to be able to sustain and build upon it. So here overall are the costs. Just like all of our other adoptions, we use the six-year adoption model so that we can maintain that rotation. Print teacher additions and any student books will be included. In this case, we are doing class sets as well as every student and teacher will have digital access, which any student book is an ebook or is connected to Google Chrome so that it's able to be typed in and done as if they were using a workbook, but digitally. And then on top of that, we are going to add in, hopefully, the vismos digital simulations program so that we can provide that to all of our students. These will be funded through permanent improvement, and then our digital simulations platform will be funded through our excellent students. And lastly, just going back to where our priorities are, we want to continue to improve student achievement. We feel these resources are a great start in that direction. We want to hear from our community, our teachers, and know their voices are heard. And with this, also practicing fiscal responsibility. In this case, because we continually use the same companies and we have that partnership, we're continuing to be able to receive negotiated free and lower shipping costs as well as we stay within, and sometime, in some cases, depending on the course below, we don't need to plug it this year. And that is our presentation on a science question.
Thank you very much.
Any questions?
Well, actually, I had a couple answered as you went along. What I had from the beginning was, you know, PVLA, and you've spent some time on that and the supplemental materials. I gotta tell you, I like anything that's called vismos, I guess. Neat term. So, no, no further questions. It looks like it was a very thorough job. Thank you.
I'm disappointed, having used a first environmental science book that you've got a bit of that environmental science book, I thought it was useless. So I'm glad to get something new. Looks like it's a little better.
I am extremely excited. So from a parent's perspective this year, our son is in 10th grade honors camp, and he has really struggled with the back and forth. And the content is he's very intelligent, obviously, but he's not relating to the text in a way that he's understanding it. And then coupled with the lack of kind of an opportunity for my husband and I to dig into with him because there wasn't that. So I am so excited to have a way that parents can then access that stuff at home too, because that, I think, brings that authentic literacy and that, I mean, just all of that kind of those discussions. And there's nothing better than net geo for, I mean, I'm a huge fan of them anyway. So I think that this is great. And I think that it also opens the doors, which I'm looking at some of the names on the staff that was there. Those people are so connected with their students. I mean, they know where it's going to get and what it's going to take to kind of dig down and get these kids into it. And I think that that's, these are all going to hit the spot on the back. So I am super excited. Amazing job.
Thank you, Ms. Emmett.
Appreciate you. My effort.
concludes our remarks.
Thank you, Dr. Smilak. Now communications is the appropriate word. Anything from board members?
I think we covered commencement and everything, so.
Do you have any other to say?
No, I don't even remember what it was. So I think we're good to move on with the veil, Tabitha.
Treasure?
I do not have anything to say.
No? Suspecting we do have a PTA council report.
Well, that was our first clue. All right. So a lot going on this past month. On May 12th, we had our last general meeting for council where we had civil war recognitions for attendance, membership, and a new award called Connect the Dots, and also recognized our outgoing president. So our attendance award, I have to announce them because there's some great people that made sure to get to every council meeting virtually this past year. That was Gloria Kazan, Gillian McCree, Delina Zangallas, and Janice Sart. Our silver recipients, we say on the missed one meeting, was Joelle Dan, Jen Olson, Cindy Bratz. And our bronze recipients, they missed only two meetings, were Angela Verbe, Amanda Rouse, and Dr. Smilak. So congratulations on them. We also did membership awards. So these are for units that basically, even with the pandemic, did a great job at retaining members throughout the year. And those went to First Step, Densler PTA, and Green Valley. And then the Connect the Dot Award, which we felt was really important, is these went to two units who, in spite of the pandemic, worked really hard to connect to their families, provide virtual events throughout the year, and really give support when families needed it. Engaging events, you know, even though these kids sat on the computers, sometimes several hours throughout the day, they went out of their way to have some family activity, be it, you know, a guest speaker, where, you know, or a magician, or they even hosted like drive-through events. So that went to Densler PTA and Parma Over Childhood. We also recognized artwork from our Reflections kids, all of the students. We didn't have an award ceremony in February, but we sent them their artwork back along with a gift card to Dairy Queen and their certificates. From Densler, it was Kiara Ketchy. From Pleasant Valley, it was Jackson Wolf. Greenbrier was Tyler Wazinski. And then from Green Valley, we had Emily Serenda, Dominic Archurano, see if I don't pronounce names, Brian Porzinko, Liliana Burton, Megan Deitdat, Michelle Nguyen, Natalie Carrato, Olivia Minch, and Joshua Nepatoni. Moving forward, I was just coming from one of our last ones. We were wrapping up the prize patrol for scholarships. The whole list of winners will be posted on June 3rd. We want to congratulate all of our seniors that received scholarships. If the students have not seen their post yet, we are encouraging them to be patient on social media. My new best friend, always best friend, but love her at this time of the year. Amy and I have been working, getting photos swapped back and forth, and we want to make sure that they have a little bit of time recognition up on there. So every three hours, it's been, I've become a pro at this time of year of getting them up there and setting the times and everything. So it's exciting to share with that. Adreniums and flowers from our adrenium sale were delivered May 1st. I still have a couple things. I wonder if people realize that their plants aren't at their house, but we had over 4,000 items delivered back to that Parma Senior High parking lot. So it was a great overhaul, and we again want to thank everybody who purchased flowers throughout the buildings. And this is a primary source of funding for our scholarships, and we greatly appreciate it. Yesterday, we had our incoming officers' workshop in person at Parma Senior High in the cafeteria. We did also broadcast it on Zoom. So it was nice to finally see some faces in person, be able to go through things to transition for next year. Next Wednesday, we'll be hosting our spring awards dinner. We'll be recognizing our awards recipients. So we didn't have this last year. We're honoring last year and this year's award recipients. Our Helping Hand winner from 2020 was Cathy Montgomery, and our 2021 winner, Cathy Montgomery's from Hillside. Pish Russo is from Green Valley. Our TMPTA 2020 winner was Amanda Schwatter from Parma Park, and 2021 is Cammie Springer from Green Valley. And then our Special Education Advocate winner was Erin Maccitt. So all of them have been notified, and they'll be there to receive their official plaque and everything. Ohio PTA Convention is coming up June 11th and 12th. So yeah, we don't even really get a break because we're going to be going right into that type of training. PTA, I know you've got your goodie bag. So council, if anyone who signed up, we usually would have a suite down in Columbus and have lunch and meals and stuff like that. Instead, we pay for registrations to attend the virtual conference and get a little goodie bag.
Big goodie bag.
I'm glad you liked them, Cindy. And finally, I guess I want to thank everybody for a wonderful year. It's been a little bit different. This is my last council president report. I have completed my two-year term twice now. We're not going for free, so.
Say, this is only your latest.
This is only, yes. I'm not taking two years off and coming back. I'm good. There's other people. I'm ready to push them in the door. So I want to thank you, Dr. Smilak, all of our PTA units and our great staff. Thank you for supporting and providing, you know, us with endless support throughout the year. You know, again, Dr. Smilak, central office, and the school. Office, and the school board. You know, it's funny, when I tell people, Central Office is our secretaries and our people we work with for council. You go into a building, you have the secretary, the principal. Well, I have Dr. Smilak and all the secretaries and everyone that's here and you guys that I work with and build a relationship. So I've enjoyed this year, especially how different it has been. But I look forward to, you know, next year for the course working with all of you guys. So with that, I don't know.
You also say congratulations to Heather on the children that she has raised.
I was just gonna say the same thing.
It's unbelievable, children. You have a lot to be proud of, and part of it is your involvement. And I think, you know, your whole family benefits from that. And we really were grateful for everything you've done for us, but most grateful that you trusted us with some great kids.
Well, thank you. Yeah, they're at home building a garden pit to plant all these flowers.
You don't want to keep them away from the deer, right?
Yeah, deer.
Exactly. And I do have to say as a comment with the graduation, I think it was beautiful and on spot. I've been to, well, last year was virtual, but my son graduated at Wolfstein. And I just, I would love to see this become a tradition here regardless of even the worry about the weather, because the one thing afterwards, it was the families. We pulled out as Forge was out, and I really felt that everybody had a chance more to celebrate because we were closer. You know, you get out of Wolfsteins and you're all spread out and, you know, these kids really loved to take pictures in the parking lots. I mean, everyone kind of hung around more. I mean, and it was nice to see, and I loved watching the videos too. I mean, I think that was great to be able to pop up and watch the other graduations, so.
They're all very familiar with their surroundings here. I mean, you know, they've all been there a zillion times.
That was a great point, though, seeing them congregate at the end when we were walking out. I didn't even think about that as a, from a parent's perspective, so that is really great.
I mean, I liked at Palmer, like, we weren't kicked out. Like, I noticed, like, all the elements, you know, you have a process and everything. And so, but Palmer, like, the kids eventually got to go into the field and take some pictures. And it just, it was a nice way, and like I said, we're not rushed out of, you know, we don't want to get out of downtown because we're here, we're home, and we're comfortable, and we can see our friends. And, you know, so many of them, even as more Palmer, you know, there were quite a few Valley Forge kids that were still outside getting pictures with their buddies. And I, you don't see that happen when we're downtown. So.
It worked out.
That's awesome.
It was really nice.
I missed your report.
That's good. I already told them. I said, I'm, I go, you've got, how many more people have been coming here today? These are fun. I enjoy coming today, so.
Just one more thing before you leave. It's like, thank you for doing what you did.
You're welcome.
And I will say thank you.
You're not done. You cannot sit down. You're not done. You know, I know this is your second time around as council president, and I will tell you, Heather, that I am really grateful that you're the person that fell into the spot in this really awful time, you know, that we've been through the last 15 years. I think a first-timer would have had a much more difficult time adjusting to it. And your leadership has been outstanding through the process of trying to keep PTA afloat and helping people and training and, you know, just like the schools have had a, you know, a really challenging time adjusting to different ways of teaching, PTA has been the same way, you know, trying to maintain services to schools and children in these times. So thank you for all that you have done through that, besides all the regular things that you've done. I really am impressed with how much PTA has been able to maintain considering the difficult circumstances that we've had. And I'm sure a great deal of that has to do with the work that you've done and the leadership that you've done. So thank you for all of that. Yeah, just on a personal note, thank you for your constant, continuous, unfailing support of the community scholarship because that's been. Oh, there's still raffle tickets available for our last one. So that's a pull next week.
Yay.
You're welcome. You know, I think that it's, it's exciting. I mean, we've all getting ready to transition, and I'm looking forward because many of these women and parents have been, you know, trapped down and they're aching to get back into the buildings and do things. So it's very exciting to talk into them, like with the training last night, and just in general, as these new boards are starting to be built, you know, and put into place, they're ready to get their hands back into the PTAs and, you know, which was exhilarating because I've seen other places and other PTAs where parents have checked out and they're, you know, we haven't done it for a year and a half. We're done, we're not coming back, you know, it is what it is. And I haven't found that in Palmer. I have found people that are wanting to step up and wanting to, you know, build PTA up even better than what it is. So I look forward to seeing what comes from fresh faces and new surroundings. So, so yeah. So thank you.
Thank you. Any other communications this evening?
We haven't.
Okay. Do we have any amendments this evening? I believe we do.
We do. It's postponed rescinding of the, rescinding of the tick resolution.
Which is 2021-05-248, correct?
Correct, yes.
We're not rescinding it, we're postponing it, if I understand.
Postponing the rescinding policy resolution.
Okay.
It is a resolution.
All right. Until June 10th, it says on here.
Yes.
Okay, with that, is that the only one?
It's the only one.
Then I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-229, adoption of amendments.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-229. Any questions or comments? Roll call, Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-05-229 has been approved. This time we have public participation.
We do not have any.
Okay. I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-230, approval of the written record of proceedings from the May 13th, 2021 Regular and Special Board of Education meetings.
Second.
We have a motion to second to adopt resolution 2021-05-230. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-05-230 has been approved. And that brings us to curriculum. Mr. Vaughn?
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-231, approval of extended date childcare parent handbook for 2021-2022.
Second. I have a motion to second for 2021-05-231. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-231 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-52, no, 05-232. I must have added the numbers. Approval to enter to the contract between the career and technical education job training experiential learning program of the Palmer City School District in Millikan Lizard.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-232. Questions or comments?
Some people just give a.
Happy to.
Thank you.
This is renewal. So we have, we've placed here before, students participate in various job training activities, stand setting cables, placing ketchup, barbecue sauce, salt, pepper, drink menu, napkin dispenser, these types of basic job training skills for our students to do those for their various requirements.
Okay.
Any other questions or comments?
They also weigh on the rings and macro invites.
Really?
Obviously, before you go. And they fill the solace.
Okay.
Just wanted to be thorough.
I just didn't know anyone ever weighed on him, right? So I'm kind of like, hey, okay.
Well, how would you know how big they are?
I guess I would.
Kind of his eyeball.
This conversation took a weird turn.
We came up, we were very specific about their.
Killing me small. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-05-232 has been approved.
Thank you. I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-233, approval to enter into a contract between the career and technical education community-based work experience experiential learning program of the Palmer City School District and Palmer Heights Senior Center.
Second. I have a motion to second for 2021-05-233. Any questions or comments?
Well, yes, we have to know what the job description is.
Here we go. Their duties will include washing, rinsing, and sanitizing tables, setting the tables with placemat, napkin, silverware, and set pieces while learning these various tasks. Students are also learning how to follow multi-step tasks, self advocacy skills, daily living skills, socialization, and communication skills.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions?
Listen, what triggered my first question was, I'm sure the community was curious as to what role students would be doing somewhere that might serve alcohol. So I wanted to clarify that. But I do like to know what they do. I mean, it's, it's really great life skills.
Yeah, it's good job skills. That is a renewal. It's not the first year we're doing this, correct?
Our students have a longstanding relationship with me.
Yeah. I thought we asked last year, too.
Okay. Any other questions? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-05-233 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-234, granting authority of the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-234. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-234 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-235, granting authority to the administration to enter into a contract with the family during the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-235. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-235 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-236, approval of adoption of the chemistry, chemistry honors, biology one, and environmental science.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-236. Again, that was a great presentation. If you have any questions?
Excellent presentation.
Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Enthusiastically, yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Resolution 2021-05-236 has been approved.
All right. I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-237, approval of overnight out-of-state, out-of-country field trips.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-237. Any questions or comments on this?
I think this is a football camp, I believe.
It is, yeah.
Probably for a team.
That's what I, that's my answer.
My daughter's on the bomb.
The boosters, the football boosters were able to actually lower the cost by 50% of the students. It was supposed to be 200, and we were able to pay 100 for each student.
Nice, very good.
That seems like not enough money for three days, you know.
We did very good. That's the relationship to our coaches filled with, our surrounding.
Any other comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-237 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-238, approval, oh, I'm sorry, approval for foreign exchange students from Germany to attend Valley Forge High School.
Second. I have a motion to second for 2021-05-238. Questions or comments?
I'm assuming this is for next fall, 2021-2022.
Right. I love seeing these. I mean, over the last couple of meetings, it's like four or five, isn't it?
It is, yes.
I don't know why she's hiding me.
There were two in the last meeting?
Yeah.
I thought there was an Italy. I thought there was a France.
Italy, Spain, and France.
I missed the France, huh? Spain. All right. I like it. I mean, I, I really like the fact that, you know, we do the foreign exchange. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-238 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-239, authorizing agreement for assessment software subscriptions for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. Motion to second for 2021-05-239. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-239 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-240, authorization for membership in the high school, Ohio High School Athletic Association for the 2021-2022 school year.
Second. I have a motion to second for 2021-05-240. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-240 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes our discussion for this evening.
Thank you very much, Mr. Vaughn. Move on to business with Mr. Price.
Yes, I'd like to move to adopt resolution 2021-05-241, authorizing disposal of personal property.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-241. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-240 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-242, authorizing sale of an obsolete and unneeded modular unit located at Padua Franciscan High School.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-242. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-242 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-243, authorizing sale of two obsolete and unneeded buses to Brooklyn City School District.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-243. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-243 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-244, authorizing auction of obsolete and unneeded vehicles.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-244. Any questions or comments?
What vehicle?
These are buses as well. Brooklyn took two because they're, obviously, we're ending our partnership, so they need buses again. And then we have some other buses that we are able to pay down because of the significant investments that we have made in buses over the last two years.
Thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-244 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-245, authorizing cyber liability insurance policy.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-245. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Broads.
Yes.
Mrs. Carvis.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-245 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-246, authorizing to dispense with competitive bidding requirements and award a contract under the cooperative purchasing arrangement for paving repairs at Hillside Middle School.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-246. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price. Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-246 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-247, authorizing participation in the Ohio Schools Council Waste and Recycling Program.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-247. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-247 has been approved. Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes business for this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Now, right back with finance.
I move, I move to postpone action on, on resolution 2021-05-248 until the June 10th, 2021 meeting.
Second.
Second.
I'm sorry, that was me.
You have a motion to second?
That was me. Sorry. Short naps are wonderful.
To delay action on resolution 2021-05-248 until, until June 10th. Questions or comments?
Rescinding resolution 2019-12-534, authorizing a real property tax exemption under revised code section 5709.40 and 5709.41 in connection with the development of certain property in the City of Seven Hills, compensation agreement, and related matters.
We do have a motion to second, though, all right?
Correct.
Yes.
So what we are voting on, correct me if I'm wrong, we are voting to delay until June 10th.
Correct.
So a yes vote means we are in favor of waiting till June 10th.
Correct.
Okay. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. Amended 2021-05-248 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-249, approval of IRS required amendments, 457 plan documents.
Second.
A motion to second for 2021-05-249. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-249 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-250, approval of an agreement with BMI Audit Services.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-250. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-250 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-251, approval of Healthcare Process Consoling, Inc. Service Agreement.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-251. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-251 has been...
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-252, approval of supplemental appropriations.
Second.
A motion to second for 2021-05-252. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-252 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-253, authorizing to accept activity purpose statement.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-253. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-253 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-254, acceptance of contributions and donations.
Second.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-06-254. Any questions or comments?
Um, just, you got it?
Go ahead.
Just wanted to, obviously, we thank everyone, especially with the staff appreciation, and particularly the City of Parma employees for using those funds to memorialize a young member of our community that passed away, Jacks.
Very nice.
Thank you, thank you.
Unless I forget the 85 bucks of girl's card. That's unfortunate, but thank you. Any other questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-254 has been approved. Unless another board member has anything to discuss, this concludes finance for this evening. Thank you very much, Mr. Price. Do you have any legislation reports this evening, any Mrs. Carpus or Mrs. Carpus?
There's a lot of chatter. We will save a legislative report for when there's something substantial moving forward with this direction, and then we'll follow up then.
Okay. A lot doesn't happen during the summer, too, right?
Well, it's a budget year.
Yeah, this summer, we're gonna...
Well, that's right, this summer here.
Yeah, we're going to...
There's a lot of...
Usually, it's a slow time.
Right now, it's just a lot of polarizing chatter, so...
Oh, there's news. Okay, then we go on to Human Resources. Mrs. Brodts.
Thank you, Mr. Schweitzer. I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-255, approval of the following certificated exhibits, confirmation of certificated appointments, confirmation of stipend amounts, confirmation of substitute teacher appointments, acceptance of certificated resignation.
Thank you.
We have a motion and a second for 2021-05-255. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-255 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-05-256, acceptance of certificated retirement.
Second. Sorry, I'm reading.
I know you're reading something.
I'm reading these as we're going.
A motion to second for 2021-05-256. Any questions or comments?
Are we doing anything for the environment?
We will at the end of the year. I mean, I know we're close to the bottom, but I didn't do...
Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-256 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-05-257, creation of the Bachelor's Physical Education Teacher Job Description and adoption of job description.
Second.
A motion to second for resolution 2021-05-257. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-257 has been approved.
I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-258, approval of change to resolution 2021-05-204 for resignation to retirement.
Second.
Who got the second there?
I have a motion and a second.
It doesn't matter. It was one, it's my daughter's little teacher, which is why I was like, I'm reading it again.
Resolution 2021-05-258. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-258 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-05-259, approval of the following classified exhibits, confirmation of classified appointments and replacements, confirmation of change in classified assignments, confirmation of classified resignations, approval of classified non-compensated leave of absence.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-259. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-259 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-05-260, acceptance of classified retirement.
Second.
Motion to second for 2021-05-260. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-260 has been approved.
I move for the adoption of resolution 2021-05-261, approval of reduction in force classified personnel.
Second.
I have a motion to second for 2021-05-261. Questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes. 2021-05-261 has been approved.
Unless another board member has anything to discuss this evening, that will conclude Human Resources.
Thank you very much, Mrs. Brodts. That brings us to policies, with Mrs. Carpus, and I think we have a few first readings.
We do. All of these are no language, no language specific changes to PCSD, other than who's reportable, things like that. The first three, while they read identical, they apply to the different parts of our staff and then our students. So, first reading of revised policy 1662, anti-harassment. First reading of revised policy 3362, anti-harassment. First reading of revised policy 4362, anti-harassment. First reading of revised policy 7450, property inventory. And I just wanted to note that we were already doing this prior to, this is the one, right, John?
I'm sorry, which one?
The property inventory, that we were already doing that.
We always knew the inventory.
Right. So that, we were ahead of Neil's recommendation there. The first reading of revised policy 7455, accounting system for capital assets. The first reading of revised policy 8500, nutrition services. And on this one, I just really like to note, Mr. Vaughn has put an end to it very quickly after he came here, but now we have a policy to kind of back it up. There are no longer any negative consequences for a student who cannot pay for lunch. So, when my kids started here, you'd get a stamp on your hand that said, you know, need lunch money. And then the rest of the day, you know, they have that mark, or you get a cheese sandwich. There is no longer any of those kind of ramifications for our students. And so, it kind of takes that stigma and stuff away from the kids and really, it aligns with all the decisions, you know, Mr. Gordon's made, and all the things he's done to kind of improve that, but now we have policy, you know, hopefully that will be improved at the next meetings to kind of keep that in place for decades to come.
It was never the child's fault that they didn't have money for lunch on a particular day.
Absolutely.
I applaud that.
So, unless anybody else can bring you the policy, that concludes it.
Thank you very much. Opportunities to have questions, write into the record, anything this evening? Nothing? And I move to adopt resolution 2021-05-263 to adjourn this meeting.
Second.
A motion and a second for resolution 2021-05-263. Any questions or comments? Mr. Nusia.
Mr. Schweitzer.
Yes.
Mr. Vaughn.
Yes.
Mrs. Brodts.
Yes.
Mrs. Carpus.
Yes.
Mr. Price.
Yes.
Resolution 2021-05-263 has been approved. This meeting is adjourned.